They talk about my extensions, so be it. But I gotta do what I think is right. So, uh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else want to speak? Madam Chair. So, um, Dr. Mona, I will not be voting to table this simply because I want to go through to council. Um, hopefully we can have the votes and the support to get it to go through to council. Um, and so, I'm full support of this program. I completely understand. I understand that with the ARCA money being a part of it, it saves the benefits of the money. And that is a few selling point for me of why we need to put the ARCA money there to protect benefits of mothers who will get this money so that they will not be later taken away. So, I'm, I'm in full support of that. And everything else was I saying. And I, I know that my colleague, the 90 second point, as a mother choose to retire from the family, I will not give a bird's eye on it. But I still fully understand the plight of mothers, and single mothers that I've watched, uh, people in my family and just people around the community. And I understand, um, like my colleague in the A'set, this will be a hand up and not a hand out. This is very important that we get this done. I also understand that others are watching this, other people making a decision as to whether I have to give the rest of this money so that if I can grow, I can help the mothers. And so, they need to show that your city is in support of this so that it can get to the 55 million because the mothers can't live by this anymore. Anyone else want to speak?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Um, Dr. Mona, you talked about, um, uncredibly, um, funders. How much funding is, um, worth it for our support?
It's unclear, but there are national funders who are waiting to, for the cities to commit before they commit their dollars. And it isn't with millions.
I mean, usually when somebody go give you some money, they send you a letter and at least tell you, I got 50,000 or 2 million, um, rating contingency on the city of Flint. So, I'm not, that, that don't sound right, that you know how much money. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying, just be clear, we're talking money. So, if somebody are convincing themselves to give you some funding, how do you just generalize, okay, we gonna give you some money, but you don't know how much money they giving like, okay, maybe my foundation said we gonna give you 2 million dollars. And they sent you a letter and said, we gonna give you 2 million dollars and give the city of, um, city of Flint, no, they didn't. They gave, um, 10 million to worship the Philhouse contingency on city of Flint gives a 1.5 million dollars. So, you need to tell me that these people who are out there and, um, never never land is gonna give you some money contingency on if we give you a million dollars and we don't know how much money.
Yes, they're waiting to see if Flint commits until.
We never matter.
No, it hasn't been committed yet. They're waiting for you to act first. A lot of our grants were contingent. The foundation gave us 15 million dollars, but only if we were able to raise another 15 million. Which is, we got to have your 15 million, so that unlock those dollars. So, this is also like a map. They are waiting for the city to be part of the city's program until they commit.
Did they send you a letter or something?
No, it hasn't been filed yet. It's not, they're.
I don't know if they committed to give you some funding if they don't give you because of the law.
They used to do your MOU.
Alright, thank you, Madam.
Memo, understanding.
Anyone else want to speak on this more? Our favorite, Congresswoman Lee, I'll speak again.
How, you want to hear her say, you know, okay, this money, and the fact that this is 1 million dollars, it brings me in 55 million dollars. I heard my colleague was saying that, well, you already got 41 committed. The fact is, the 1 million is being turned inches 55 million. And then you let me, uh, yeah, I'm saying, I didn't hear.
I cannot hear.
Absolutely, that's please, all, we are asking for the audience to have the tone less powerful, more aggressive. So, Madam Chair, this is an opportunity for us to take a little turn to about putting in the hands of, um, women, this community, that community, that's what I have. Holding forward, I don't see any specific against it. Um, I heard my colleague mentioned, well, they keep going by, um, you know, the benefit, the benefit be that little school president, not your daughters.
What she said?
But being a mother and knowing how much time to watch, you know, how. What is your question?
Do you realize that I don't want you to get out of hand in this vote, but I was really trying to ask per se, um, do you understand that?
So, that is the top first question I'm asking, you know, and that will warrant a warning.
Man, come on, Dale.
The chair did not give them a warning. The chair is making a statement. The chair is saying that when you abuse a privileged motion like Mr. A. did, that is a warning. So, that's why, so that's why I'm saying, President, your voice.
Madam Chair, according to the rules, then you should receive a warning when he's talking. And this warning should have received a warning.
Spirit shit, man.
Turn your mic on. We can't hear you.
As I say, we cannot move forward.
As we see, you should have been given out.
We're looking to our plan.
I will, uh, neither here, who has asked for the, their proper question, as you did request for information when I was talking.
So, she for that thing.
And we need to quit doing that because it's derogatory and it's falsely proven. You give us the question information to me and we can do it. Quit doing that, so I will say stop, let me finish my point. All of that type of stuff, continue to move on, don't let it be, don't say it, because you do have a. For me, know it sometime, quit doing that, do it to yourself, do it to this burden, quit doing it to my reputation.
My time is being wasted by people bombarding me without speaking. And I was saying, you cannot do points of initiative to even off the board. Or if I say a place, like you have here, so.
I hope you really have a.
There's nothing, the chair did not warn, there's nothing to warn us, the way that they took.
What a board.
What is your, what is your point?
You keep saying that it was improper and it's taking control. And that's a decision you made and you are too direct. I didn't feel any decision of a chair.
Come on, don't deal, man.
We got to.
She started this, the deal started. She did it.
If you may, I'm utilizing my, my word deny, and again, I'm utilizing my freedom of speech.
You, we, uh, the chair.
Anyone else say that we are willing to share the chair's.
No, no, no. No, no.
This is just God, as you said, President.
I'm like the, denied, so as we move forward. So. This is so obvious, when I give the court, I interrupt the decisions, this is so obvious. So, as I continue, I, I found my thoughts.
Good, good.
Why are you looking at me? Oh, my God. Jeez. God, yeah, tell her, don't look at me. Yeah, tell her that.
I'm gonna pass it on the time before we start kicking the can down the road.
Kick the can as long as you're going.
The fact that.
You kick it, wait, kick it a little bit.
And it, and it must happen to January. Order in the chambers.
Give it to her, man.
So, no more, I'll look. And. So, I, I hope to prepare and see what our chair have, I hope to prepare. And so, mothers are depending on this money. Mothers are looking forward to the decision. And I don't want to, and I'm kind of getting this, getting involved more and getting their, um, projected amount budgeted now getting more. I'm forward because I'm for a plan, so that's my promise.
You for a plan.
Alright, so with that being said, we're going to go ahead and end on this one. And the motion for is to table Resolution 230 to A1.1 to Finance. Roll call, Madam Chair.
No.
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
No.
Mr. Mayes?
Word.
Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes. Yes. The vote is says yes, we know. Resolution 230 to A1.1 has been sent back to the Finance Committee.
Yes.
Uh, next we have Resolution 230, 32.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mayes?
Madam Chair, Resolution 230.
She gone. She don't care, she's gone.
This was 90 days. And I moved that to counsel.
Alright, so I'll give this report.
Now, Chair, my support.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, it was easy, in my opinion, for you, Mr. Murphy, Miss Priestley. I thank Mr. Piper, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Piper, Miss Murphy, to suspend me for 30 days for my legacy. I thank y'all in that league. Now, this is the resolution to 90 days because I'm thinking of taking the money and shrinking surprise. It's worse than me using a cuss word in the council.
Yes, it is.
I looked at the news today as a guy, I don't know if that was New York or New Jersey, but his name was Ben Daz or something. They turned a whole, ah, money. Mercedes Benz or something. And I, I got that on the council for, for 10 years. If I knew that you should talk to Ash and Cal and get my moan, that's the reason. I am allowed, if you're a preacher of that, I would have went for 2,000, 200,000 for that last. And with the property request to sell the lease last, if I had that money, I would have quit. We owe in charge that it tell us, we take it back. See, I don't worry about what the FBI, out of all the force that's there, we have a duty to request the charge, that's the real deal. Where when you spoke to a local speaker, that's the real deal, you spoke about the ombuds person.
Yes.
The ombuds person in the ethics committee can only make predictions, they just set up. They should recommend the suspension. They should recommend the removal when the book starts here. Whether it's the mayor, whether it's council members, the child would give us the right to not just suspend people, but to remove people. I told the Lord and all, but they don't listen to me. I'm told you have to put rules in place, but they don't think about that. They passed a motion with ease to remove an elected council person from the personal of the 30 days. So, this resolution started at six months and guess what this priestly said? And I don't want to put words into my ministry, correct them from now. You said out the way that you teaching me council remains that we can remove books for six months. Like, you want to remove me for six months, that's what I took from it, I could be wrong. But you said it, yeah. Now, y'all teaching me, I don't think I'm in the council meeting, Chester Sellers, Woody Appleby, and Lionel, and Sid, and I ain't never seen nobody do it for y'all. Because if you ain't got nothing to write your book, Attorney Kim.
Great, yeah.
Attorney Kim is a big problem for y'all. Who told you you could deliberate outside of council meeting, you could go just as video, perfect role was here, yeah. To nail, if anybody quit listening to me as the chair was like a beauty. It was just broke. He booked out up and left, they see just bring it back and talk to Attorney Kim and change back to a group, I had German dude for lack of a form. And it is just being lack of a form didn't count, but it didn't count that like. Y'all have been broke and voted repeatedly contrary to the rules. Discriminatory. I don't know if it's racist for the self inherent basis.
That's right.
But sometimes it's a bad, so racist, that's the hair, as I know people that ask me, do you regret calling folks dangerous, you bad people? No, because when you look at your condition, there it refers to Clarence Thomas. And if that official is black, folks, you don't care so much about blacks, but they're trying to do things to satisfy whites.
And that's supposed to go on mine.
You gotta look at it. So, I move both, this is getting out for 90 days, if it don't pass, I'm coming back with 30. If it don't let happen, I'm gonna see different thing.
Alright, anyone else in the first line? As it speaks to the child, which we have talked and had open discussions to be transparent, there was, there is a problem. Look at the monies that were given, they were not disclosed. So, it was not disclosed that, um, who, uh, Dale Lewis and Chris Murphy received funds from Ash and Cal. Section. Section 1, others, um, 1 to 602, which is our ethics, it speaks to it. And then it speaks to AC, it says A, which, it states, a gift received from a voting service relative or be a family member, provide by relative or be a family is not at one of the parties as we are or engaging in attempted settlement. But what we did not discuss our charter, I know we have to go back to correct that using the nonprofit. Because it was not disclosed that, um, Councilman Lewis, nonprofit, Saris Heart, which was originated in August of 2021, that, uh, that was her nonprofit. That was not, you did not share that with us, you never disclosed that. And so, also, when we look at, uh, section of the flexi charter, 9A, uh, to solicit or accept a loan payment from an individual who is providing service to, providing service to, or receiving tax payments, credits, or exemption, exemptions from the city of Flint. Ash and Cal did ask the city of Flint for a 72 million dollar tax exemption or payment. And it wasn't disclosed, so it goes to, we're not bringing clean hands. So, that part is a problem. Because when we come up here and, you know, when we did our legal opinion, after we did it beforehand, I'm not in agreement with the legal opinion because the citizens, um, you're able to circumvent the city charter. And it says to their dangerous persons, as we discussed in last year, that any of us, if we open up our, our bare on nonprofit, we can circumvent the flexi charter and do business with everybody on the list. You know, we can do the complete time, do Weinstein electric, whoever else is owning, because it says the presence that we go for a nonprofit, don't disclose it. That, and it also say it doesn't have to be disclosed, that there is no punishment. And so, guess what happens? It opens up the doors that companies will be buying your votes or our votes. So, it's very clear. And it's almost an other project, because when Councilman Piper asked, we already, um, just coming down, he said, I vote yes, if you vote and you don't vote. And you don't vote out and still vote. You still, that's still, okay, but you took, Councilman took the numbers, vote out of 750 dollars. That gives you pride of at the council hall for 45 miles. You got to disclose that you put in Ash's capital and they're funding you for your special project. And then it looks like their special project, in a 272. So, it's not, we, if this opinion was asked beforehand, I wrote, we would have done it, the legal opinion was given after. But you take, do not operate with clean hands. I don't think it was an apology to my college, or I apologize to my college, not letting, you know, I, I live in churches, they bought out money money. No. Y'all won't remember, I know how that hit. Don't take the money. Spying in Detroit puts a prison. And they called it bribes. Clarence Thomas is jet around everywhere, went back to do this by his faith, because he did not build your hand bread. Nice vacations, don't they, can't do that, it's important justice. You make decisions for the state and you don't have to take it. And they did not refrain from voting. If I was on rate anything for not voting because of my sins on ARCA, I would not let that fail. I would step outside of my bounds to support Ash and Cal, so it didn't fail. You didn't know that. Y'all have these private conversations, I need to stop, you're not operating with clean hands. Anyone else?
That's right, man.
Madam Chair. Um, my, um, previous one, I'm supporting this one as well, um, just, just, Vern stated that, um. I offered the opportunity to support it, so that we don't have to take it over. And it's, to me. There are, you might not have read it in the hand, because you're using your nonprofit, you know, use air quotes, nonprofit, to top off your council. Everything you put out, you use the nonprofit over. So, how is that by the conference? And, and now, Ash and Cal is supporting your nonprofit, is supporting your council activities, that's a counter, you know, draw your own. And then I see that your nonprofit put out the, the news, the, um, or the business, now hit piece about the, um, press channel. So, how is it that the nonprofit needs to get into a political situation by, by hit piece, by other gossipers? How is that within the boundaries of the nonprofit? That's why those lines are so blurred.
What's your question? What they keep on your mind with?
Those line, or those lines between you and your nonprofit are nonexistent. And you are using that nonprofit to shell donations.
Ooh.
To hide from the community. Plain and simple, you know, it's funny, back in 2019, uh, where, give me one second. I agree with you. Um. Let me find, there's just one thing. I apologize, let me correct myself, from 2018, you tweeted. You read through, or Kamala Harris said, she's saying that yesterday I announced I would no longer accept contribution from court taxes. And I don't have.
Ooh, don't make that food.
To the separate system that rounds out the doors of American people, we better. And your comment to Kamala Harris was Big Business shouldn't produce political bodies. Isn't that a contradiction in what you just did? You literally took a political donation from Big Business. Who break it home?
Ooh.
How does that not, just, I don't really get it, Madam.
That's right, that's right, that's right, man. That's right, Big Fight, you got your back, Dennis.
Um, you know, this Louis Morris, where he was writing his account, so the campaign, from Ash and Cal, what Mr. Mayes did, so.
He disclosed his. He disclosed. He disclosed his.
But they did not, it wasn't amping to.
He disclosed his.
So, they did not have to.
And excuse me, the audi, the audience should not be speaking to council. The audience should not be yelling out.
They shouldn't yell at us either.
Part.
They shouldn't yell at us either.
So, what needs to happen is, we need to have order in the audience.
And it's from the council.
And Ms. Mohammed, please.
She shouldn't be hollering at people, not there and go.
Ms. Mohammed, please.
Ms. Lewis, stop. Resign, Ms. Lewis, she should resign. You incompetent, you're incompetent, you're incompetent, resign. She don't care.
In fact, I'm gonna make a motion that we sit you down and chair this meeting and the next meeting. I made a motion. So, to Mr. Mayes, who's standing at ease, please hold.
Your request for information, I am, what you're saying that the ease, what you're referring to.
Take, the point of our report is when we take a pause, when we hit the reset, but a pause to get in the order. Respect.
I understand, I understand, I was amazed of that, what you're saying, I, I was clear, what you're saying, what you're saying.
Madam Chair, all I need with those. That's, I mean, I understand what all I need to do, so listen.
Ah.
I'm getting things together, I want to make sure that we are in order, so we can come speak. According to Robert Moore, you use the term stand at ease, and that just puts a three holes, not reset, but it's a three hole, so the chair can, what is your question?
Madam Chair, I need a motion. The next thing for you to do is ask for a second to my motion.
Alright, so, um, so right now, I want everybody to stand then, uh, this feeling of the ruling of the chair. All right, Ms. McCarver.
And this is for ruling, Ms. McCarver, our order for yelling at the chair. And
And Madam Chair, uh, what a quarter, Madam Chair.
What do you
You need to ask for a second for my motion. I made a motion.
Okay.
May I hear the motion?
Point of the board. Um, Madam Chair, Councilwoman McCarver did a motion on the floor first. And then it was, you did not ask for a second. You skipped over that. And so she puts that on, and tries to ask the chair to ask for your second.
She actually appealed her legal rights and she was coming in and then she made a motion to
So, um, so, um, you got a start. You want to go to the certified lawyer. So Ms. um, Ms. McCarver, she received the warning. And then she put a motion on the floor to remove me from the chair for the rest of the week.
And the next one.
She was coming to appeal. She said, "Doesn't that match you?" She can make a motion for a second to remove me as a chair, but this means I'm in next.
Okay, so, so the removal from the chair, paying out the appeal, correct?
She never really sees it. She's going to
Okay, so, so you got that appeal for the warning happened in Rock and we wanted to remove her from the chair. Is that what you are?
She says she should appeal, but I don't know if I can appeal.
What you said, Ms. McCarver?
She was going to be being appealed, but I didn't say to her, so I didn't, I don't dispute. But what she was saying was that she's making a motion to remove me as a chair, which means I'm in next.
Okay, and then
And please hold.
And so, so would that also, would that save me by Ms. Vern?
So, Ms. Vern, what did you say?
Madam Chair, because you're giving her five seconds. Alright.
This is where the court, where colleagues stay what you're going to pay for. This is not a court of justice. So, so first, I heard of the other one. I didn't hear of the second one. Um, so she said that she's second in vote. So we're going to go ahead with the second of vote with Ms. Vern. So first, we will go with the warning. And then second, we go with the removal of meeting chair for for special affairs. For, I'm looking for a bit for, relatively
For, for special affairs as well as council meetings. Because we're the, we're all right.
Got it. Alright, so now we go to the, um, to the warning first. So
Go that one.
Alright. So go ahead, Ms. McCarver. You have been warned for, um, for, um, yelling at the chair and being on the court. So go ahead.
You know, it's a shame that the residents come here to be impeached in this process. And you treat them like they second-class citizens. This is a shame. You, you keep getting racist words. And with Sister Mohammed, you didn't call Ashley, call out her name. You didn't need to call out her name. And really, all you needed to do was like, over here in this section, please calm down. All of us, please calm down so we can hear. Stop being nasty to the residents. They have a reason that you're sitting up here in this seat. Last week, you put out money, your residents became up, came down to you to get help. You gotta stop doing that. It's not about you. You sit up here like you some type of dictator. And you're gonna dictate, dictate all of us sitting up here. And I'm tired of it. I sit here and I watch everything that's going on. I'm probably at a scale where, but when you're sitting here and you're hearing your own comments here and there, and you never stop, uh, councilwoman, what do you, you never, never stop.
Ever. Ever, ever, ever.
But you want, but yet you want to put the residents out. This chair belongs to the residents. You can't control them. And yeah, I get upset. And I'm continuing to get upset because I'm gonna stand with the residents. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I wasn't in the room. So I can't do my I don't get my And that's okay. I got fixed in. I'm in power today. But I'm already listening to what's going on. I'm gonna show you an example of what happened when I did turn in the room. And I won't talk too angry to Ben here watching to hear what I couldn't say. I went in the room and begged for a or something. But when I came back in the room, that highest privileged motion under council rules, the highest privileged motion under Robert's rules is point of order. When you say point of order, all talking to seats and the chair, if they was here. That didn't happen. She said, "We're in a pause." And then she did three more other people that ain't come back to me yet. Did y'all notice that? My point of order was to see what was going on. Now, these senior councilperson been here for ten years and the chair made me like a bee eye and tossed off the roof. Not just to me. But that's why I come up with the term hierarchies. Discrimination and different treatment has no place on this council. It has no place in our society. Don't discriminate against being favorable and worthy, refusingly. That's why you determine that you paid. Look at her. It ain't a bad job, but it's what it is. And so I see it in every meeting, been seeing it for four, five, six months. And, um, then people condone that. That's why we listen and you close, Ms. McCarver. We know word that y'all vote by step. We said, we said the mail vote by step. I was proud of Mr. Murphy today. He didn't vote by step. I wanted to be in and move beneath the law. Y'all gotta quit condoning wrongdoing. You gotta quit condoning discriminatory treatment. Because if we don't have a majority of council, you perpetuate that. We used to say when I was President Vice President of the N A C P. Those who are quiet and say nothing are wrongdoing. It's just as wrong as the wrong. God bless us all.
It is very hard to hear what's going on when we have audience members screaming out and it's been constant and very loud. And no, you cannot control their behavior because they are adults. But what we can do is give them a warning and then they must be know they cannot be quiet. That is the rules. There's nothing funny about it. There's no need to scream, insult others about it. It's just what it is. And if you were being the one screamed at, uh, you would have a problem with that.
I did.
But it's because it's a political enemy of yours that can defend this atrocious behavior. And let's just call that out. These are political games. Um, people are brought here to these meetings that support their things and others. And they're here to cause chaos, uh, scream at us, uh, harass us because they don't like us trying to get the business done. I'm calling out.
That is the third crime I spoke to you. So and Ms. Murphy, please.
He didn't say that. He didn't say that.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. What do you want?
Do you think people support it right or wrong? Or Jerry Mays, you really believe that I have these people come on this day here talking about right or wrong?
Where your supporters at?
I'm thinking my time. So, um, I don't bring supporters. And again, this is all just shouted at me again. There are supporters, she said.
You shouted.
I tell them not to, because of people like you.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God.
Asking with the audience. She did a warning. A warning.
She won't. That's the second time. She did it tonight.
Ms. Murphy, um, according to point seven two, you cannot argue with this resident.
It's the second time.
Man.
That's the second time.
You gave me a warning. You gave me a warning.
Oh, my God.
Look at this.
She did it to me first. She won't give her a
See, that's the bullshit right there. That's it, right there, man. And then
She did it with me first.
She said, man, for real. And didn't even, didn't even tell me, "Are, you gonna get a warning if you say something?"
You're not listening. Um, maybe it's that work is working. I'm not saying anything. But then my colleagues over there have been talking this whole time, clearly, signing and saying things. And that you say work is working. My name comes up a lot when you just be sitting here trying to do Um, again, this is orchestrated. This is a bullying tactic to try to support TikTok radio. Mr. Mays is making money off of
He been shit back here.
And he uses money, he's not ready to come in so that he can earn more money on TikTok.
Oh, my God.
All y'all need to get up and walk out.
Order in the chambers. Order in these chambers. If we can't, if we can't have order in chambers, then we will have orders in the chamber under the league. If you want to remain in this meeting as a spectator, we command order in these chambers.
Well, it's sad, Dave, that Flint is known for its chaos, dysfunction.
Uh, Ms. McCarver, will you please come to this side of the audience so we can have order in the chambers?
Hey, man, y'all need to get up and walk.
Ms. Ms. Wilson is encouraging them to break forth. Please do not yell out, Ms. Wilson.
I ain't yell out shit, man. I'm gonna tell him, man, shut the fuck up talking to me now. For real. I can say something.
This is crazy. They calling names out all day long.
Shit, I can talk to you.
Again, back to you, Ms. Murphy. Please proceed thirty seconds.
I, I'm saddened that this is what the city has been reduced to. Uh, chaos, dysfunction, and it's purposeful. Um, my colleague cannot speak her mind because people are shouting at her constantly. And they're trying to make a little bit of a chair. Uh, because they don't like that she's running the meeting in order. And, um, again, Eric Mays is making money off of you in this city by purposely creating chaos.
Anyone else want Mr. Murphy?
This, this, this lady, this, so, for real. Your tone of voice, um, Councilman, um, Ms. McCarver, it ain't what you say, it's how you say it. And even, I'm sitting here listening to the audience, the young man in the gray, um, front row. I never, ever hear it. I hear, um, the young lady in the front and I also hear the young man in the front all the time. And I know if I hear them, you guys hear them. And when we conduct ourselves and we did, it's not appropriate. But I just hear people on this side.
And as much as he did it when he was out here, see what I'm saying? That's the bullshit.
And, um, our chairperson is only trying to keep control of the council meeting. And I don't understand how y'all have a problem with the, um, chair, um, trying to keep some order. If I hear, I know the chairperson here. And sometimes the chair people, I'll be like, "Man, John here, you chairing, so you gotta conduct yourself." So how can you sit there, um, chairing me and you constantly hear people on the front saying things? Because I hear y'all. Brother, y'all think we don't hear y'all? We know, I do hear y'all. I hear them over there. And who's constantly hearing them while we're up here trying to conduct me, but it's okay. But them to sit up there and be, um, making comments in the audience and we supposed to be okay with that? No, whoever the chair, whether she be the chair tonight or don't be the chair, whoever chairing me, me, God, it's the house drawing with me. Other than that, we gonna feel this in your way and as if council meeting here. Because we sitting up here dealing with these heavy situations that we deal with now. Because I want the chairperson to check the audience when they out there talking and, um, get the burnout. It don't work like that. And then when she trying to check the audience, you trying to check her and then you raising your voice so loud. It ain't what you say, it's how you say it. And you don't have to talk so loud.
You talking loud. You talking loud.
Sometimes, Ms. Murphy, what are you doing right now?
Right, right.
My voice is loud.
Right.
So who we are is born on nine o'clock, is building special affairs, city council meetings, rocking that pile of when you started city council meeting yet, because we here. I'll be supporting chairs.
Do you want to like speak?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Vernon?
According to rule twenty seven point two, during any portion of any meeting, council members may not engage any type of argument or discourse with members of the audience at any time, any reason. You failed to warn yourself, you failed to warn us, working, both of you should receive the warning. You're not effective chair. We've been here for four and a half hours. You're really
You're not effective chair. We've been here for four and a half hours. You're rude, you're mean, you're disrespectful. If you want, you make little moves with your eyes and things, your comments don't respect your wishes, you took warning, rash to handle. I know. That's very gruesome. You're not ethical. And of course, council workers would have to be proud with what, uh, you talk to the audience or you made with your, whatever you do, because you have a problem when you say the noise rash to handle. So everybody gonna be a problem. So when you talk about it, you wanna go off on the audience, you do that every time. You choose to weaponize the police against the residents. You're doing everything. That's what you do. And I'm gonna urge you and advise you to not keep going after our L. He is attacked by the American Disabilities Act. If you need to have a stick or nothing.
Amen.
You have every single bond. You can't do that. Maybe when you get that cluster, take that, if I wouldn't reset, ask Julie or Dennis or one of these chairs to take over. If you become overwhelmed. But what you have shown is consistent and how you chair, you can't chair. You can't chair. It doesn't matter what evil work it is. You're one of the members of the board, she should have got a warning. You should have warned yourself. You okay with it? And I'm seeing this thing like it. But if you want to see these rules, I have to enforce the rules. Certain enforcement is a separate credit. So yes, councilwoman, person, understand, because week after week, every meeting you chair, you throwing out the resident. You have to remember your resident. You're the one arguing, you're the one shooting your board. You go and say you're shooting your board. Ask someone in your mind. You're not determined to call. So when talk about not having a chair, you don't need a chair because it's going to be a dirty fight. And oh, that is not time to run a sign. But you hear this is the kind of cheese sign. That's not me. When you hear a sign, when you say people are signing. And when talk about what's happening, there's so much going on here just immediately. I wouldn't have a meeting. Y'all worry about time, but the same thing that you say that you warned us for, you break that rule yourself. Every single time that you break that rule, every time, you need to remove the chair period. And I hope my college can come to town.
Anyone else who likes to speak?
Madam Chair.
On this card.
Um, I hope the, uh, the taxpayers of the press conference realize what we're dealing with.
I hope they see.
And I love how my college is mighty important so is. And you mentioned Jerry Donner was legendary.
Yeah, you- you talking about his kids.
Talk about discourse. You literally got into it with, uh, the young lady in the first row. What are you looking at?
Yep. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Dennis.
Without- without pointing out the talk that you disagree with or don't disagree with. But someone you agree with, you have to put, put your butt in. And for the record, um, chairing is one of the most stressful of greatest opportunities we have as a city to move the city forward. The- the record will show, every meeting that I chaired, I've never heard of the audience like that. I've thrown, I've thrown one person from the meeting for argumentative discourse and that was the kind of person that I could work. I've never taken a person in the first row of the line, the second person, the second floor of the line. I've never taken any of those folks to the line. Because it's all about chairing and meeting those talkers and have argumentative discourse without interruption and absolute chaos.
Here we go.
What is your request, Ms. Murphy?
My question for the councilman in the east ward is, is insulting your colleagues and telling them that they're going to be, um, at National Cheeseburger Day and talk this is happening?
That was on Facebook. That was on, not just Facebook.
That was, that's- that's a warning. That's a warning. That's a warning.
I'm on the past. I hope the pastor sees this.
That's her name.
She ain't gonna warn her.
That's a warning, man. That's a warning. You giving everybody else one?
Madam Chair. National Cheeseburger Day is not valid in front of our citizens. And you have not to warn her.
She won't. She won't.
Ms. Murphy, she asked, Ms. Murphy.
Man, come. Look at this here.
So, Mr. Piper, he can either answer or he can proceed.
Wow.
I feel the ruling of the chair.
Wow.
Not the one. It is fact, it is a rule. I feel the ruling of the chair, the decision, I feel the verdict after.
Man, all of them need to get up and walk out, man. That's what they need to do.
You're gonna get a warning.
And I don't give a shit. Then kiss my ass.
He already does. That's my man. I get this little business.
All right, so, um, going back to, um, how few minutes, is there that?
Madam Chair.
All right. All right, let's go back to the first of people from this card, um, Ms. Parker, morning. Um, Mr. Piper, you can speak.
Um, I- I said it was, uh, about first, about this, uh, field. Um, we wanna hold the audience to a different standard, but we have such rules in front of us. There was no agreement or sort of pressing subsection before this meeting. The rules aren't posted back there. Some folks may know our rules. Some folks may not. We'll hold everyone yet to a higher standard, but, uh, we're not getting into the tools of this decision. So until we post the rules back there that we're expecting them, that holding them up, holding them up to their standard, up to our standard, then I don't understand how we can continue to throw out, out attacks, paying citizens that pay our council salary and vote us in. That, to me, is a derelict committee. I don't think.
All right, anyone else in the, in the, um, first round from the only one, uh, Ms. Parker, clear?
Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Chair.
So, what's been asked in this meeting several times is that the audience refrain from yelling. It's been asked several times. I say this with the understanding that emotions are heightened and passions are running. I feel like with Ms. Parker, that is whatever. She was upset, her was worried, right? I do agree with Mr. Murphy. Uh, it was the way you said, how you were yelling and all that, how you got out. I do agree with that. But then I also wish to say that it's got, it's got to go a long ways. The audience has been asked several times to refrain from yelling out. This is a professional meeting. And you have to, see, see, you- you say, don't put your up, but then you do this. The reality is that we have to be professional. We have to act as a new world. You look at state council meetings from all over the country. There are rules. There are rules. There are rules for how the council is made. There are rules for how the audience must behave. This worldly conduct is a thing. You can get your number out right now. As I'm sitting here trying to defend your right to be impassioned, but at the same time, it's hard to defend. It keeps happening. I get it. I get it. Y'all are upset. There are things up your head that you do not agree with. After this meeting, we have a regular council meeting. If you have another opportunity to come to that podium and let it rip once again. And I am offering your right to do that. Between these meetings and, but the other shoot is there been a lot of times where y'all have been yelling out and nothing was said. Nothing was said. Like, at the end of the day, the reality is, everybody has to conduct themselves better, audience included. And I get exactly where Ms. Parker was coming from in the sense that she's upset that she feels like the residents were not being heard or she felt like the rules were not being firmly applied to everybody. The rules do have to be firmly applied to everybody. The rules do have to be firmly applied to everybody. The rules do have to be firmly applied to everybody. This warning could have been dropped and we could have moved on. The rules do have to firmly apply to everybody. The rules do have to firmly apply to everybody.
So we have a request, Ms. Murphy.
Yes, sir.
I hope this is not straight. Could you straighten this one?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm applying. The rules do have to be firmly applied to everybody. So this is one of those situations where we split the debate. Audience, please respect what's going on up here. Please refrain from yelling out as much as possible. I get it. I get it. I get it. After this meeting, though, you have another opportunity, another council meeting, to go ahead and let it rip. Ms. Parker.
Thank you.
I do.
Any, any other who'd like to speak? All right, so things that there is going to help it all over here, please. Our council, our, our child today, this, uh, you know, must have the corner. Calling this one for her, she committed yelling and she knew that she was yelling. She told me to give her a warning. I did exactly. She understood. I gave her a warning. And then she appealed the ruling of the chair. I'm not bothering anyone. I don't wanna see anyone ejaculate. But what we need to see is our people, we need to see people following the order. And one thing that we do know, just like kids know in school, you not yell out unless your teacher called on you or unless you're doing that activity that requires everyone to yell out. Ms. Shen, she said it succinctly. This is a professional body. Regardless, uh, contrary, this is a professional body and we must conduct ourselves like that. And for those that come to participate with this professional body, you must be held to the same standard. I didn't keep the lady out because, um, who's, I, I, my resident out for no reason. What I did was I brought her to order. She refused to get an order. She began to argue for yelling me. You all, this is not, this is like an identity politics. Whatever that this chair done, I get attacked. The fact is, this chair is upholding the rule. I'm getting attacked.
Oh, my God.
We have to make sure that we are in order. Anything else is uncivilized. So for the audience, I've warned the audience several times. And I also stated that according to our rules, it says that if the councilman you're not recognized according to rule twenty eight point one, you cannot speak aloud. That means you're causing a disturbance. If you call a disturbance, you're being disordered. According to this ruling, person's subsection, you are audience member and both a council member. If you receive, you receive one warning for being disordered. The second time, you are off the order for being disordered. That is removed and that is under our city code subsection. So no one is removed from this meeting without receiving their second warning. Council member and audience member is alive.
Requesting permission.
What is your request?
But is it out of people that you're not applying an equally among council members and the audience? Do you understand? We said you ain't doing an equal application of that.
That's not my problem. The voices of order, the information, they are as used to find out information that you don't know otherwise.
What did she just say? What did she just say? What did she, what did Eva just do?
National Cheeseburger.
What did Eva just do?
It is very unfortunate that we not here. And I hope everyone is witnessing what is happening. So with this meeting saying, a memo will overturn the ruling of the chair. A no vote will uphold the ruling of the chair. And getting this one for her, her requested warning. First of all, Madam Chair.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
She said everyone about five or six times.
The rule is five, yes, three, the, the ruling of the chair is overturned.
She ruled her.
So, yes, uh, we are on the, uh, on the motion to, to the, meet from chair, that's what they're, and from council meeting. And so, and the second one. Uh, you are right. You are right. It was a tear. It was a tear, uh, of the ruling of the chair for not wanting a warning with words. Okay. All right, so, and then the people ruling the chair for not wanting Ms. Murphy, um, and second one, Ms. Murphy, so go ahead.
Madam Chair, sometimes you actually take, some people might call it a waste of time when we do these appeals. The only way to educate the community and ourselves is to do these appeals. And so for months and months, you know, we've been saying, you gotta warn this word, this is a beautiful thing. You gotta rule that this word is points of order, is points of information, and part of order, just like you said, mine are. Because I really don't believe that you be out of order from what I've heard. And it's a pattern. It's a pattern. And it ain't a test, Bert. You guys don't really know the herb in meeting in two thousand and twenty-three. And why a trans Thomas now she comes up, who's a hand that she put it through. Now, this word, it can shake her hand, but you plant to her for favor proposed. And I would say, Mr. Piper, you, in my opinion, have been both wrong with just this chair, we just said that, but she voted right on this. And not even about the right of folks, right and wrong. But when your eyes open up and you really look at what's going on, there's got to be this equal application of rules. You can't keep throwing black folks out and let white folks get away with murder. You can't throw the white folks out and let black folks get away with murder. It ain't about black and whites about wrong and right. You gotta do a equal application of rules. Don't you love this council of balance and you ride up the button? Madam Chair, if you wrong, you got it. I'm not wrong. I'm not recognizing points of order. You done that tonight. That's our order. You should have your first one. Dude, you get out of order intentionally or unintentionally, but it's clear, I said, point of order, you haven't taken back from me yet. You get frustrated. It's difficult to check, but y'all wanted things in your person. You wanted to go get out of chair and talk about it. Now you know it's different. This ain't a on the job training. This is real council. Multi-handed, double vision. Discriminatory reaction to me and Wendy Carter, we ain't gonna put up yet. We been in the civil rights movement. I know we ain't gonna turn our back on them back here, but equally.
All right, anyone else who like to speak in the first round?
Madam Chair.
You go ahead, Ms. Parker. You go ahead, Ms. Fattin.
Um, I think the councilwoman on seven, they have to be, um, the, the rules have to be applied equally. And your consistent refusal, refusal to warn colleague of that order is ridiculous, guys. And that's, and that's the problem, and that's what lies on the audience side. That's the double standard that everyone is seeking. Right. When you have rules, you can't, I mean, you want to, we got to call it, we got to call it, yeah. For doing like, request order, but but when the colleague in the ninth ward does it, you might give her a path deed, or a lot of people give her a, uh, you know, that's a topic. You may not want to, but you, I don't think you gotta pay the residents. So, when we talk about the double standard, and the way that you, you chair, it's obvious that you only target certain people, the super members of council. It's, and, you know, maybe, maybe I was lying to that in the past, but maybe the illegal, uh, contribution. So, this is, this is why I heard the girlfriend had asked of who, who chair this. You want to pick your shoes, you want to have a lot of those. And that's not the way it should go. If I'm out of order, I should call. Um, for the most part, I vote on the corner issues, the way that I feel that the corner issue was violated. And right now, it's hard to hold members' power for the corner, and one of the biggest violators is the chair. I would go in against the chair, and hopefully, we have other colleagues that, uh, we can finally give a warning to the number nine ward for Ms. Fattin.
Yes, you can.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in the first round?
Madam. Ms. Winkler, you're really funny, that Ms. Viper said misconduct. When he called you a name in the last meeting, you never did call that.
You wasn't here, you wasn't even.
Well, hello. Request for information. Request for information that you would request. Uh, do you realize you called me a bitch, you called me a gell? Did you apologize for that?
She forgot to tell the pastors that one.
And you said, gell, or she acted, and then you didn't come back.
But it is a lie, Ms. Winkler. It's like a hamster. So, isolated. Um, it's really, it, it, it's really funny, that Mr. Viper, he really likes to look like he's so professional. And yet, he's been on social media insulting all of his colleagues.
What she?
Um, and
What she been doing? Nah. Nah.
Um, I'm just saying, well, Ms. Viper, a- again,
See?
Here we are, with the end of the man. And let, let us just pause this where we are, just so we can go forward with the chair. The same level that happens, the same level that you're talking about, me taking illegal campaign funds. So, you gotta be paid. So, let her proceed to speak. So, if you're going to order, I'm going to deny you, because that's okay, you were out of order too, as well as other colleagues for, uh, for saying that, and honestly, that's against our rule. You don't suppose to vote back, you don't suppose to refer to, uh, to back against items. But the last, the point is, you said, what does that have to do with this, mostly the same thing it had to do with Ms. Worthing?
Point of order.
What's your point?
Isn't this the appeal, and previous appeal, was on, was made during the resolution to suspend your taking notice?
With, with, with Ms. Winkler, and that's when you made the comment. So, going to order deny, back to Ms. Worthing, and you.
Um, many like to dish out, just can't take anything, it comes back to them, it's constant. Um, not that I'm here to do that, we clearly are, we did not get done. And I, we heard what I said, this name-calling, um, yelling, not getting things done, it's not productive, and what happens then, none of it. We've not even gotten to the council. Um, so, I, I don't know how this city is going to move forward.
Get rid of you.
And we do not trust, and they're shouting out again. Um, if we cannot
Request an amendment. What is your request? I would say, if I was to say something, they would not check, and realize that Ms. Worthing, that was not check.
We're talking about that, so. Ms. May, that, that's the problem, let her proceed.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And then there's constant interruption, but then, other people are raised for them. If, if madam, we get nothing done, um, it appears. And to have professional people there, like Dr. Mola, that have to cut out what this type is looking for, so I don't know how people can sit here, we're professionals, um, sitting here, trying to improve this city, trying to help us. And we are here to call names, scream at others, um, uh, uh, there's not much to defend there. He's not got any business. So, what is, I'm gonna ask this again, what is your purpose of being on this council? Is it for political points? Is it to, to be famous? Or is it to get the worst of this city done?
Let's be serious.
Because I don't see business getting done. And so, if you're a part of that, then you're the problem. I want to vote on issues, not people or personalities. I'd like to get through the meeting, um, without screaming. But this, I mean, this is beyond any classroom, this would not happen in any school, and we tolerate it. Uh, so, let's do better.
Anyone, anyone else? You have a chair, oh, Ms. Burn.
Thank you. So, this limitless loyalty is not providing evenly, nor fair, and that's what we want. And that's why your meetings are so out of control. Pure out of control. If the audience or the members of the meeting something unfair, then you're being outrageous. Your behavior is outlaying. When people already called, uh, Black, you know, the council ghetto, she called me, her, your residents, they called. You're actually so Facebook, and I'm gonna read what you wrote, and it's very important, that you don't ever you're not a true, obnoxious person. Let us back in order. If you say this to my person, you have rights to be comments all the time. You've been getting praised by the same person, who called my daughter a monkey. Now, I speak for you, for Apple. Okay?
Fuck.
So, Tracy Murphy said, let's second order, said, Tracy Murphy always been gaslighting, remains a racial issue. But it's not, point is, she continued to break the rules by unawfully taking the floor. That was twenty-fourth word saying, today is the one to be your best. Totally out of control, sadly, that turned into a threat. Then Eva stood up, which was out of order, and again, going back and forth reverse. If Congress Bear Gang may see a anger she hid, I will wear it with pride. Do that, you watch something that you hid. You keep protecting this woman who is clearly racist. Something is no better wrong with you. Something is wrong. You wanna try, I'm here, my, you saw my daughter's picture, that they put her picture. You can't mix some silly comments, but you didn't have to sit down and sit. If your child was on the cell, you know, I don't care, people, I'm gonna defend the children. You go back and forth with this crazy lady, and that makes you part of the problem. We get work done, but you're not here, and you're not here. It got caught up, yeah, eighteen resolutions, that one, and how did you first hear? She wasn't here, she is a problem. And you feel, you can't detach yourself from it. And it's unfortunate, because you could have the ability to be a great chair, but you're not. All your needs result in a dumpster fire. You can't say, I'm a victim, and then say, I'm a hater, you hid it. Which one is, you said you proud, when you defended her for calling black people ghetto. And she did acknowledge it, and fuck her, I would never call the press, the press about her calling people ghetto. I don't know shit about you, but I still don't have that much time.
What is your question?
Well, she called an narcissistic asshole also, in front of the city of Turin. So, her, her mom was wild.
Hold on, so, Ms. May, that was what Ms. May meant. Yeah, I know, she's not yours, but
Come on, that was a quick inquiry to Ms. Burn, it had nothing to do with you. Quick group in our name, that's even better.
Deny, you have to be, our best information is within our rule.
Please, please, you see, Ms. May, again, you do not provide rules to Ms. Worthing, and you have to fight it to yourself. With special, a very poor leader, as a chair, we can't leave, you follow me, if you don't know how to leave.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Anybody?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Listen, so my colleagues, I'm coming, coming to be listening to the, the guys go ahead and walk. And I would encourage all of them to be posting about each other along
Yes, question.
Y'all have to spend a lot of time on, and I'm sitting up here, listening to y'all, and learning stuff that I didn't know, that colleagues are posting about other colleagues on Facebook.
Yeah.
And it's just ridiculous.
Yeah.
And it's getting out of control, and now it's spilling into the city council, and here we are. And city council talking about Facebook.
That's it, that's it, that's it.
One, one of your request?
Sorry, but Facebook, if you've been here for months, watching some of this stuff, that's
Get, I'm, right. Make him lose his train of thought. He was on the wrong. Right.
All I'm saying is, y'all should examine, you guys, yourself. And Paul Hannah said, um, listen, is what I'm supposed to post on Facebook, is this uplifting my belief, or is it tearing them down? And even if y'all see somebody posting about one of y'all colleagues on Facebook, why are y'all even commenting on it?
Oh.
And even if y'all comment, or y'all see something, you know, um, somebody told me about a post that my colleagues had been, um, nine more, I mean, eight more posted, and I said, no, that's not him. That's not his character, that's not his moral, that's just not who we are, as a person. I just couldn't see myself. One thing you won't ever see me do, and I have not done since I've been on city council. You do not see me posting on Facebook, uh, things that people say about me, because they talk about Jesus, so that. And I understand that I'm in a position that people may not always agree. And I look at people, when people say, uh, do, I, that, when I ran for office, I knew this was coming my way. So, if somebody says something about me, and I don't agree with it, I, I'm not gonna go on Facebook. They have a right to not agree with me, and to make their post about what I want to do. As if you won't see me, if somebody posting about Tanya, or Jerry, or Leel, or even, I'm not gonna like it.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna comment on it.
He don't.
I don't know if you'd allow it, because y'all still, this is my colleagues, so we should be like the family. It's, um, sticking up as a forefront of, when we out here in the public, instead, we sit up here, um, feud with each other on Facebook, and bringing it back to city council, we still ain't got the business done, because we too busy talking about what somebody posted on Facebook, and we the dogs, we the posted, he said, in the family.
You're right.
This is ridiculous.
He don't, he don't be doing it, he don't.
Ms. Winkler?
Ms. Chair, I was just saying, you got to apply the rules fairly. You got to apply the rules equally. You got to apply the rules fairly. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? And, uh,
Hey, they getting ready to vote.
So, saying that
They getting ready to vote, Eric.
That's why I, um, the ruling of the chair, saying that the chair not more with words, this is nothing to have here. For one, when this word is speaking, unfortunately, the audience was speaking as well. And so, the, the home is on the council, not be hard there. At the same time, the home is on, for the county, for the audience member, to be in order. So, you can't yell out, and she can't yell at you. So, it shouldn't be going both ways. And so,
She yelled at, she yelled at me.
About this course with the audience, or this more, and without some questions, to actually break down, cheeseburger.
No, so, so, we're gonna deal with the ruling of the chair for how, um, running this word.
For the cheeseburger. Right, right.
You know, I didn't wish to, you said, rip the law.
Yeah. I, I appeal because we were, I heard, when she interrupted, we were very close to that word, not pointing. Like you do up, that's what it is, we have a thing, and all that, and that's not fair, and
Not a problem, not a problem, so, all of them press that, that the ruling of the chair was appealed because she was talking to the audience member.
No.
That's where I thought it came from.
Champion.
So, going back to, um, to the affiliate that she used, and the proper, um, request for information, probably, yeah, request for information. And I just, you said I didn't order. She asked, she asked Mr. Viper a question.
About a cheeseburger.
She asked Mr. Viper a question. And the question was about a question. Mr. Viper had the opportunity to either ignore her, repeat, or answer the question. The, we begin to get into muddy waters when we start going with request for information. When you are purposely trying to take the floor. That, if we really go twenty-six point one to twenty-six point four, this is what, this is what we're saying, and then it says, you give request for information, that I'm claiming, you're using, and request for information as an opportunity to gain the floor not allowed. Multiple abuses of request for information is caused for disciplinary action. For one, she asked a question, and for two, that was the one time that she did to Viper. So, this, the rules that you put forward says, for multiple abuses of request for information is caused for disciplinary action. So, therefore, the chair did not give her a warning for doing this.
She, she did.
Of course, wouldn't these councilmen?
Eric, soon as Eric said.
So, in that being said,
Soon as Eric said.
If you want to overturn go ahead.
Yes, yes. Yep.
So, Mr. April, you like your third point of order?
No, it wasn't, it was the first one.
So, we have video to show, please review it at your leisure. Well, what we're about to do now is something, and so, if you would like to overturn the ruling of the chair, please vote yes, that's fine. But if the chair did nothing wrong, according to Rule twenty-six point four, please vote no. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Murphy.
Uh, no.
No. Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
No.
I stand to this, it's ridiculous.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, no. You want to go with this, three no?
So she don't get a warning?
Um, she don't get a warning.
She don't get a warning.
The, um, the ruling of the chair, and...
She can treat anybody that they want to.
They, they involved in enticing her to do a push.
But I'm going to excuse me, the motion to remove you from chair. And it is, having a move of respect.
Now, I don't know if it's gonna be five votes, but what's important, and ain't this removing you as chair of this special pair. I'm understanding as chair of the council meeting as well. Now, here we got, one, two, only three resolutions. One of them has to do with Dr. Mona Batista Hammond, and the other two has to do with you, Ms. Quinsey. I don't expect cooperation from you, Mr. Murphy. And Mr. Murphy did some good speeches you did, and it comes out of Facebook, but you was dogging the app. And this dog in the app thought it made this brace, the council, and that it was us, and you come in here. I've been here for ten years. We went through violent crisis, and emergency matters, budget deficit. That ain't true, what you said, you knew. You were just, Lewis, the dog, because that's his attitude, bad, saying bad, right, government, right? So, saying it to my face, and first been saying it on Facebook. So be careful, being a hypocrite, if I fuck people's shit, and shit do with their colleagues, and you dog me out, and you did this before. To my face. And then you keep voting, turn down, and lose every vote. That's why I said, change it to this. Now, this is, I don't expect that you would vote to suspend Mr. Lewis from chair in these meetings. You got stuff done, you wasn't here, she wasn't here, Eva, where did you went here? We cut all that work up, because for three vote weeks prior, we was getting balled down, with us trying to go council people with other lives. And somebody said, oh, man, we gotta deal with the elephant in the room. We definitely, we turned the elephant in the room, and we got the work done. And I know y'all heard about, 'cause y'all wasn't here. Now, it don't matter to me, if I have to be in council chambers for two, three in the morning. Pastor Harris, I ain't embarrassed to tell you, with Pastor May is due, we be out at six in the morning, pardon. What I tell y'all, being up to two, which one, if having to do this, 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 this city pastor reaps, is better than being our partner. Let nobody rule you about a minute for me. Everything we do is a purpose of you. And we address these appeals in different treatment, that's a purpose. When we do resolutions and guilt, uh, multi-million dollars, that's a purpose. We put E D C in these streets, and we didn't stop in our passion, and our experience to address civil rights and discrimination, and different treatment, don't let nobody rule y'all of that rhetoric, get shut down. Equal and fair treatment is part of American history, of life, to get shut down. So this, Lewis, I hope voters approve you from this meeting and the council meeting, and we can fly through this stuff. But we might not have five votes. This priestly, has removed herself from all of these important civil rights discussions. And I think, I mean, I know how to go back and forth, she sitting back there with a woman trying to recall, and they got the board of business out. That's that same trip Pastor Harris I seen on TV with you and Chris Martin, and she standing in the bunch. They saying they really gathered to talk about this use of the term, my people. And Chris Martin talked about houses, and revealed this stuff, towed down, and she standing with that shirt. You gotta be careful who you rolling. We the U A W Democrats, strong, they say, I ain't gonna be here to honor Trump coming, but guess what? She said, I'm Republican, pardon, if that's true. It means something, I understand your community and politics, I don't understand what we make out.
Yeah, let's speak in the first round.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, thank you so much, my colleague in the first word, always love to, um, write my name. But one thing I want you to know, uh, two things concerning Pastor Murphy, and the word of our scare, um, nothing that she got to think about me. In my opinion, I ain't never been, um, shy of hiding my feelings, or how I feel, or how I conduct myself. Um, I'm not gonna be disappointing this motion to, um, remove, not to, um, Dr. Lewis, because the audience was, um, just as far as, um, Dr. Lewis, or Tom Keaton were. Um, did she do everything right? No. If she said, oh, improvement, yes.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. Thank God.
Yes, uh, uh...
Come on, Quinsey.
Yeah, now, uh, Pastor Murphy, um... I made that motion, because you know what? Here it is, nine fifty-two. Sometimes, the... A chairperson is supposed to facilitate the meeting. A chairperson's job is to keep everyone, everyone, the council members, as well as the residents, engaged in the meeting. It should not be handled with a, uh, a, a, a honorary, um, six. You know? It should be, just move through, with no interruptions. You should be fair. You should be actively listening to your, um, colleagues. You should let your colleagues speak. You should, um, you should, if they, if they go over a millisecond of, of, of a, a, a minute, a second, whatever, you should say, okay, can you, um, rack it up? I mean, you should give some type of la, latitude. But you don't.
Do you hear what? Um, Mr. Murphy, are you aware that I got calls with this, and I actually need time to connect with this guy?
Yeah, yeah, and I thought that, I thought that was a bad taste. Replace that with a chip.
What are your questions? Just don't require a no word, and everything's a word saying, go back to my CD, y'all.
Or it was something, or something, I don't know. But, but, you know, that's neither say or make, whatever, I, I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, we got to...
Are you?
I know you ain't asking.
Are you out of order?
She ain't gonna get no one, just get...
Okay, but this is what I'm saying, it has to be fair, it has to be fair.
Oh, yeah, damn.
You have to, um, facilitate the meeting fair. And that's it. I'll be voting against to remove, um, the chair from special affairs, as well as the council, so that we can get out of here.
Are there any, um, who can be heard, um, chairs, um... I'm moving from chair to meeting, such as what happened. And I'll be where you are, and I'll...
Everyone.
And the chair is going to be subject to criticism, because you're over the meeting, you, you're over this term of office. And when I was gonna see you chair unfairly, and the rules are not being applied, but not proud, you should, your colleagues don't respect you, you don't. Trying to appeal to you for a better sense of fair play, has not worked in almost a year. It has not worked. You told us you were, and we should believe you, Dr. Michael said. And someone showed you the first time today afternoon, you told us in this meeting, when you were going off that, wish to do it, because he called your personal cell phone. And you told him you are not the same person when you are here, when you're out there, here, you're not, you're... You didn't know how he got your personal cell phone, and she wanted to call. You're not a fair person.
She cussing, right?
You're not a fair person, even if he's your resident. You, you warned him numerous times, you put this made about she's your resident, you put this on the comment out. I mean, you was going, these are your residents. They's very good, and I would think that, because they are registered voters, that you would show more latitude, or be kinder to them. Because they're able to talk to their neighbors and friends about you, and just they can speak about better to your ear, and to your integrity, because they're in these council chairs. So when it comes to the colleagues, we're not in this meeting, because I don't hear a word from you, you do not hear from me. You, you don't possess that capability. When attorney, the team of her from California, sent an email to bottom of state, that she wished that you had courage to discipline her. And she tried to appeal to you for better sense of fair play. When Eva told you at meetings, that you've been wanting to work it, because she had said some things with audience members out of listening. And you did not warn her then. So, you can't expect everybody to sit here and...
Oh, she gone, gone. She out again.
And one time, while you were with Facebook, yeah, I was on Facebook, and all that, and you be commenting on stuff, and being this shame. Even though your daughter, especially your comment was disrespectful.
So it was, it was.
But she was called, and I expected that she was called a monkey. My daughter was called a monkey, and put it across her picture.
Her wedding picture.
But it was also a picture, then it was put out, and said, the mayor comes and invite her. I mean, it took me that bad, and when you came on mine, it's got spoken, you keep putting my picture up, and also my parents' picture up, saying, we have stayed, my colleagues should go. You took the picture that I put about seven, twelve, or if you're a fool. I don't know how to, there is no, I gave up on you, I mean, I gave up on you. I gave up on you a long time ago, and in the beginning, I did agree with you, and you know that. I gave up on you, because you gave up on us. You decided to choose sides, it was more important to be a tick tack. You writing on the last, and you not following Facebook, and I'm like, I do not, when you hit me, I'm gonna hit you back. You put my children up, oh, that's it. You didn't tell that woman that she should not be putting up my daughter and husband. You didn't do that because my daughter is married to a white man. I told you, I'm not gonna care about that, that's the worst part. So you talk about things that you do, and you're talking about your kids, you have Jerry, and you have money.
Let the past...
You put my picture in the U C O, and you are a campaign, and you have a... Then you had love come up here, and I'm like, oh, by yourself. So I was showing the teacher, calling me out for it, and gave me a word, as if you could hear way past this. My daughter, you not having a conversation, as I gave him my eye mask in one hand, and he said, my girl is mad at your fingernail. And you been taking that and running with it, but I think in my feeling, this has been here, just so you know, since y'all watching my fingernail. But you not to be there. I don't know if someone can vent to you, pulling you back, I think it should be figured out, chair isn't your thing right now. We need to have someone that's a chair.
City council, everybody.
All right, any others in the first round?
Now she about to talk.
Nick Fife?
There's a lot of what I'm hearing. Mr. Murphy, when you made the comment about, uh, me posting something, it's not that I'm gonna be very close to that. But do you believe that I posted that randomly, and not without, um, having a reason? Because colleagues and second word of the night would, have posted during speaking.
Yes, yes. Tell the past is that.
In almost two years, you know, that's how our people's...
Oh, God.
Um, can Mr. Fifer please state what he posted, so we can truly assess?
State what you posted.
Thank you.
He's lawyer.
I hope that you realize, that personally, on the book, so...
I'll say it.
Before they ask you, they ask you...
Hey, you gotta check around.
So, is it not, you know, and I have been on...
She just...
And he just...
She did, she posted.
I'm thinking that, uh, in the city, this, so, I don't think when you said that...
Twenty-seven minutes.
Why?
I don't know.
She has a pass.
Well, me, you knew it. I said, I'm right there, I've done it, and I, I just said that I've done it on, on...
That's, that's a warning.
Final word.
Just kidding.
Can you warn yourself, do a proper, is that what we need to remove? You, you took, you took the form properly, can't you do it?
No, no, I didn't hear, that's why I...
Oh, you don't...
What she did, she didn't hear. You support that. No, you support that. No, you support that.
It's on my phone. Hey, Officer, he is there, he's lost me, and tried to snatch my phone, he tried to snatch my phone out of my hand. I wasn't taking no pictures of you, and if I was, you're...
No, not what that ain't got, what?
I told y'all, man, if y'all don't get her out of that chair...
That's why...
She the reason, she the reason why, man. Yeah. I'm telling y'all, man. Oh, it's done. Smack fire out of her.
Officer!
She coming out, she coming out, come on, it's okay, it's okay. Oh, shit.
I'm coming down here, she gonna call the fire. Your office, woman, she was just like...
She was just up there talking about Fife. You have another problem. I'm coming down and I'm chasing her. Girl, bye. I'm coming, I'm coming down, and she, I got.
Hey, Paul, man, Paul, don't even do that shit. Don't even do that, man. You sit up, you stand at the damn podium talking about all five hands, man, fuck your fingers, man. You sit up here and divide shit, man. Get the fuck out of here. That's some foul shit. Man, y'all need to get her ass out of, out of chair. Quincy, man, you wrong, man. You wrong, bro. You tired with her, man, and you know she's wrong. Man, you an elected official. You an elected official, man. You an elected official. Man, you an elec-, oh, you know, I don't care. You know, I don't care. I just said, man, you wrong. I just said you wrong, bro. You see what I'm saying? Don't invite me to shit. Don't invite me to shit, for real, I just said you wrong. Man, you an elected official.
Don't appeal to the pastors, Liddell.
Man. I can, I can say your decision sucks. I can say your decision sucks. That's what I can say. People up in here, man. All y'all, y'all sit up here and talk about division and all that shit, and y'all be the main ones dividing people, man. For real, Paul, be stronger than the fingers and all this bullshit, and you sitting up here, man, acting on, man, by feeling Italian now. Y'all some ignorant ass people, man. For real. Then, uh, Deanna, Dee, Dee Train, whatever your name is, man, you, you stand up there and say the same shit. And then you sitting back there taking pictures of people, man. That's some foul shit. That's some foul shit, man. So, why, you, what I'm saying, man, y'all, y'all, y'all doing bullshit, man. Y'all doing bullshit. Man, y'all doing bullshit. Yo, hey, hey, uh, clones, hey, listen, I don't know, hey, hey, listen, I don't have clones. I don't have clones, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying, man, y'all on bullshit. Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah. All y'all on bullshit. All y'all, all y'all, I'm telling y'all in y'all face, fuck Facebook, I'm telling all y'all in y'all face, man. All y'all some bullshitting ass people, man. For real. Y'all sit up here and talk about division and all that other bullshit, and we gotta get together, unity and all that shit, and y'all be doing shit behind the scenes. Sitting up there supporting Liddell's bullshit. Having press conferences and all that other bullshit. Man, go on somewhere with that shit. All y'all. And then Quincy, the van, the people up in the front row, you was the main one screaming with us before, man, when you was sitting on this side. Oh, how power motherfucker changes people. Get the fuck out of here. I don't give a fuck. I don't give a fuck. You know I don't give a fuck. Uh, you know I don't give a fuck. Oh, no, it ain't where you live, motherfucker. Shit, I don't need Facebook, I say my shit in your face.
Is this the end? Is the meeting over?
Yep.
Shit.
I thought she had left.
Oh, man, I support that bullshit, man.
I thought she had left.
I don't support that bullshit. Paul, you know you on some bullshit. Don't trust the man. Hello?
Me too. Well. First argument, I didn't have anything to do with this one. I'm mark this safe. Kermit, Kermit, we're going home, we didn't have, we didn't have nothing to do with this.
I didn't have nothing to do with this meeting tonight.
No. Alright, we're, we're gone, I think the council meeting has ended for tonight.